I had to ask Carrie to italicize all the votes that we have so they stand out a little bit better. So if you're doing it past a minute, you can pick out the votes a little bit more easily. And she's done that. Thank you, Carrie.
You're welcome.
Anytime, Rich. It's all set. We have a motion to accept the minutes as written, I guess.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of February eighth. Eight? No.
Eleven.
January eleventh, sorry.
I'll second you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay, the January eleventh minutes have been accepted as written. And the first item on the agenda under new business is the meeting with Tara Bamford. Thank you very much for making it here today with the weather and all. And to discuss the site plan review thresholds. That's what we had decided we wanted to attack first. And then, as time allows, maybe go on to the plan for the zoning amendments. So Tara, you understand what it was that I was asking for with regard to the site?
Yeah. Can I pull up your?
Sure.
It might be, just because it's gonna be a quicker thing, maybe we should just quickly talk about the work plan for the zoning amendments first and schedule the March meeting. Because that's kind of the first key step to.
Yeah, really, you don't want three people here again. We don't want to do that.
And so I think what you had talked about was having the first hour or hour and a half of your regular meetings be the work session. So I did that with that in mind. And where you have the month on the left-hand side, that would be referring to that that much meeting.
Okay.
Kind of, and the first column is what I need to do to be ready for it. And the middle one is what you need to do to be ready for it. And then what we need to accomplish that meeting.
Okay.
So just to kind of quickly walk through that. And I know that you want to focus on basically implementing the pedestrian village study with focusing on uses, parking, and density toward a more vibrant village center. And also to look at some dark skies lighting. So March and April meetings would basically be to talk about those and get consensus. I don't, I don't write material and then say, here, what do you think? I ask a lot of questions and listen and then come back and say, is this what I heard? And that goes a lot quicker. So that's the March and April meetings. And then I would be able to have a first draft for the May meeting. You know, get your comments and assume there'll be a second draft and a second meeting. There's a couple extra months in there. If something takes longer or, or you don't have a quorum or I miss a meeting for whatever reason. July and August are kind of extras hanging in there. Within mind that you would want to have a public meeting before you're ready to go to a public hearing. I think, you know, it's a good idea to get input on any significant changes like that before people feel like, just rub a stamp in it, why should they bother coming?
A public meeting as opposed to a public hearing, what's, what's the difference?
I think people pretty much recognize the public hearing is the formality when, when you're good with it. As opposed to a public meeting is just going to be a well-advertised work session. You maybe reach out to some key people who do development in the area and invite them to come so you can, you know, really get feedback on it before you post a public hearing, before you decide that it's ready for a public hearing.
More information rather than a chance for?
For you to get information.
Yeah.
Yeah. Kind of, I, I'd leave that as, oh, yes, or October. Within mind that I may be away in September. Other than that, I'd be available for all of your second Thursdays. As I've blocked out for you. And then by November, you want to be voting on a final draft that would, at the latest, go to a public hearing on your usual December and January schedule. If we can do that quicker than we certainly would.
Okay, so the one public hearing you're scheduling, you're saying in December?
Well.
November, November.
Have, no. If you, if you have a public meeting by October, let's pretend it does take till October to have it. And you get some comments and send me back to make a couple minor adjustments. Then at your November meeting, you vote to hold a public hearing and you'd schedule that for December.
Okay.
And you'd have January as a fallback if you needed a second one for some reason. You probably won't because you'll have done your homework. Fuck, I got in and put ahead of time. Yeah, so the first step in that would be to confirm that you're going to have your March meeting. Because I've, I've blocked out your second Thursdays.
Well, Mark was just, yeah, I don't know, see.
I think you said that when we're scheduled, it's, it's okay, right?
With him, but then I thought I heard a couple of you say that.
Well, I'm not going to be here, but Nancy can, can run the meeting.
I'm here.
I'm here. So the eighth.
And I think that, you know, I don't think that's real. We can.
The eighth of March. So is this, are these all going to be after our regular meetings or is?
Yeah, first hour and a half of a regular meeting.
First hour and a half.
First hour and a half.
What we can do, Tara, is look into it a little bit further. And if we don't think we can get a quorum together, then we'll try to make a change. But right now, we've only got four of us here, so.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Okay, so I'll keep it as eighth and?
Yeah, keep it as the eighth for now and Mark will get in touch with you if there's an issue.
My calendar varies, but I try to block in the regular dates for all the towns and villages.
Maybe we can look into, well, I don't know. People don't plan too far ahead often anyway, so I was going to say maybe a memo, go out to the board and find out what, how those meetings might be attended. But I don't think you could count on that. Yeah, you know, so many things come up and you don't know.
Well, you could send out an email just to see if that works right now.
Probably month to month to save you from coming over, right? Wouldn't you think?
What do you want to confirm?
Right, it's a long drive.
Yeah, it is.
Not accomplishing.
I think we should, I definitely think we should.
So you guys, do you guys want me to just send out an email just to make sure who's going to be here, who's not? Just to confirm?
And explain, you know, in the email, make it a point that she's driving over and we need to be here.
Okay, so I'll be hard on everyone.
I think you, don't you think so?
Yeah.
It's in the blood.
And it needs to be clear that everybody needs to say whether yes or no. Not just only respond if they can't come. Because last time, nobody responded and nobody came.
Well, I think you've coupled that too with, you know, there's going to be hallmarks for the planning board before each meeting. So it could be the same email that says, you know, the hallmark for the March meeting is to reread the pedestrian village evaluation study.
Perhaps the easy way to do that was simply to scan this into a PDF file and attach it to the email.
Perfect.
And say, and, and mention.
And mention.
And mention. See, as noted in the attachment so people can see what they're expected to do if people aren't here today.
This is your homework.
For the eighth March meeting.
I know, back to school, huh?
I'm getting too old.
Like?
Never.
All right, so I'll make sure I do that. So I'm not going to send this at first with the minutes. I'm just going to send this out with a detailed email on what the expectation is.
I would send that out for those that aren't here today.
Those that aren't here.
Yeah.
Okay.
Don't you think?
I would wait, I would do it before, I would do it separate. I would just send an email out to this meeting saying, we need to confirm who is attending our next meeting on eighth March. Mention, you know, Tara is coming. Attached is the planned schedule for our study sessions, workshop sessions.
And please be sure to reread the pedestrian village regulations.
And please note, yes.
All right.
If you can get that out, then, and please reply to the email.
All right. And I can hunt after you guys.
On a monthly basis.
Right.
Yeah.
This is for each month.
Yeah, so I would shoot that out right away. I think we're only missing three people right now.
Yeah, we're only missing three.
Just that way you get everybody on record.
Yep.
Says someone missed the last two.
That's why I looked right at you.
All right. So looking at the site plan regulations, it's a little bit hard to just look at one thing. And. A couple of, before we start going through this. I think we've had the conversation before that your, your site plan regulations have a lot of stuff that's really out of date relative to just date law. And that's something that you'd want to make sure is on the radar sooner than later. I can go through those sections with you if you want. But it's basically everything involving a deadline, our timeframe is, is old and out of date.
The days or the time limits are wrong?
Yeah. There are other things wrong in there too. And I think there was one of the, I think the first meeting you had me come to was to give some comments on what was, what I saw in zoning, subdivision of site plan and kind of where to start. I think it says in it that site plan isn't enforced by the planning board when, under state law, it's enforced by the site board, when you just like zoning. Got the feeling, looking at the dates, that you've been having town meeting approve changes to the site plan regs and subdivision regs because they're all in March. And it's the planning board that adopts those regulations.
I don't think we've been bringing it to the.
It's just coincidence that on March?
Yeah, I'll check with Mike and see if, Mike can do it. But I don't think it was, I mean, it's my understanding. Mike, we haven't been bringing changes to the site plan review regulations to the town for a vote.
No. Site plan review and subdivision regs are in, are the planning board's.
I was asking because every one of the revisions to subregs and site plan are March. And I wondered if.
They are. We, we just track them.
It's just coincidence?
Yeah.
Just coincidence?
Yeah.
Because I've run into towns that thought they needed to go to town meetings.
No, we, we just hold a public hearing.
Yeah, yeah, good.
That's announced 14 days before just to make sure we're staying.
So in terms of the. You were talking about.
Well, let me back up just a minute before we get into that because you brought up a subject here that I think probably makes sense. So that I would say, yeah, I don't see any problem with reviewing the site plan regulations if time permits and so forth. In other words, if we buzz right through this and it's not time consuming, then perhaps we could get a list from you of those that do need attention. Because I don't know which ones they are.
Well, let me. Let's talk about that kind of when we get done. Think about how to break up the things that need to happen to it. I mean, there may be two steps and maybe one can be kind of quick and soon. You, you talked a lot about what needs to come in before you and what doesn't. And there were some things you felt like shouldn't have to and some things aren't like changes to use. But when I looked again at your regulations, you don't specifically say that somebody has to come in for a change of use. Read, read for a minute the, the above the line, the scope of authority section here. So, so the state law says you can have site plan review for the development or change or expansion of a use. Zoning ordinance doesn't actually say you need to come in for site plan review other than for PUDs and tenants or stuff like this is. And the regulations themselves say for the development and includes a definition saying development is the construction of improvements. So, so the first question before you start talking about how to regulate a change in use is are you sure you're authorized to do that? And I think the answer to that's going to be back in the, I think it was 1981? Is it when it was first adopted? It was to re-go back to the minutes when you first adopted the site plan. Look at the actual town meeting vote. Read the minutes around it. See what the intent was. Make, make sure the intent was, see if the intent was to limit it to new development, new construction or not.
How do we get ahold of those 81 minutes?
I think it was 1981, was that the first date? Town meeting minutes were, would be in the, would be in the records.
Well, it's probably going to be theme or conversation.
If they sit planning board in 1981, I don't know. Nothing was computerized at that time.
Yeah.
And I don't know that we, we'll look through the records.
Well, having the actual language of the town meeting vote would be, would be helpful.
Okay.
The vote itself. You know, they're adopted in 1981. Did it say something that gives any clues to what?
Well, I'm sure that it.
Was development in that? Or did it just say for site plan review? And somebody assumed that development was the right way to say it? We just need to be sure what the planning board's scope of authority is on that.
We can check that, but I would bet that it just referred to the RSA, whether it was 67443 or whatever it was at that time. Then it would be broader, but I'll, we will check it.
But perhaps, you know, if there'd been some controversy about it and, and it, you know, let's just make sure that the intent wasn't to limit it to new construction.
What, what is it that leads you to believe it was limited to new construction?
Well, that's the language.
Your regulations say for the development attracts. They don't say for the development or change or expansion. And your regulations contain a definition of development that says it's the construction of improvements. It's very clear in your regulations, they don't right now apply to a change in use.
But if, if the change in use involves improvements to the property, does that not come under that jurisdiction? I would agree with you. If someone just comes in and says, I'm going to do something different, but I'm not going to change anything, that it might not be an issue. But typically, when someone comes in, they're adding a building or they're, they're changing the site in some fashion, which to me is development. Or the way it's explained in here, that's improvement. And if you look at the dictionary, what an improvement is, it's increasing the value of the land or something like that.
Right.
But, so I'm not so sure I agree with you that it only, the, the way it's written right now only implies new construction.
Your regulations are the first ones I've ever seen that didn't say development of new non-rental uses or change of use or expansion of use.
Okay, so you're saying change of use.
Those are the only ones I've ever seen that only say development. So I think it's good to just double-check that enabling, you know, vote.
So what would be the remedy though? Let's say that it just says development in the town meeting language. I know this board, I've been here for 16 years and this board has always viewed it as a change of use being something that needed site plan review because usually, like Terry said, somebody's building something or changing the land in some way or whatever. So they have always said you need to do site plan review. That's been our approach.
I, I understand that.
So what would be the legal?
And we want to make the language go with the approach. So I think the remedy would be to include in next year's zoning amendments some clarifying language. Put it in the zoning that site plan is required for these things.
Oh, okay, so could, but could the planning board adopt a change in the site plan language that puts us in line with 6744?
Let's wait and see what the town language of the town meeting vote was.
All right.
I've seen that once where a town voted to authorize just development and then the planning board decided to define development as change or expansion. I don't think it has been challenged, but I don't, I know that it would be. And I don't like to see things be challenged. Do you want to know that what you're, you can stand by or at least?
Thank you. Just in, in line with that discussion as well, Tara, just so that you consider this when you're working with it as well. After the definition of development in the site plan regulations, section three definitions B, other definitions. And then it states, the definitions contained in the Waterville Valley zoning ordinance and the Waterville Valley subdivision regulations shall, where applicable, apply for the site plan review regulations.
Yeah, and neither construction or improvements is defined in subregs or zoning.
But I think development is, is it not?
We, you've defined development for the site plan regs in the site plan.
So this would override any other definition of development?
Yeah, not seeing all other definitions or. But let's, let's just make sure it's doing what you want. So the, the other kind of big picture thing, I mean, I think you really need to get the regulations up to date plus state law. It's just wrong all over the place in there. But the other thing that jumped out at me, big picture, aside from what we were going to talk about today, you don't really have regulations in the site plan regulations. You have a set of regulations, you have the structure, you have an application process. But there aren't any design construction standards in there. When you talk about them being able to be waived, there aren't any in there. So wondering how you are using those regulations and how, how something complies with them or not. It's almost as if you're missing the, the guts of it. Where, where are the landscaping requirements and the parking and circulation requirements and the screening requirements? Where, where are all the things that you would look at on a site plan in those regulations?
You go back to the zoning ordinance normally, I think.
Well, that's what I assume, that you're, you're basically doing a double-check on the zoning. But you have this waiver procedure. You can't waive anything that's in the zoning. That has to go to zoning board for bearing. So it's not really, it's not really working like site plan regulations right now. That's normally, it's not about enforcing the zoning. It's, you want to make sure it meets the zoning too. But normally you have landscaping requirements and screening requirements and statements about pedestrian and vehicular circulation. You have all that in regulations.
I thought, I thought I remember reading something in a state statute or something like that that did provide for waiver. You know, if, if it was toward the, what do you call the plan?
There's waiver language where you, under certain circumstances, can waive parts of the site plan regulations. But you can't waive part of the zoning.
But wouldn't the site plan regulations be based on the zoning? I mean, what else can be based on?
No, it's typically another layer. I've never seen site plan regulations that didn't have regulations in it.
Yeah, but how can you make, how can you make site plan regulations more restrictive than the zoning ordinance?
Because they're looking at different things. Because typically the zoning, and you have more detail on the site design in your zoning than would be typical. But typically, the zoning is looking at what can be there, how it needs to be in terms of setbacks and frontage and so forth. And then the site plan regulations where there's more flexibility for the planning board look at things like parking requirements and where the signs are. The zoning says how many and how big, but you're looking at site plan and where they are, making sure they're not blocking the line of sight, deciding what's adequate screening and buffer from surrounding properties, what you want to see for landscaping. The how it's done is typically what site plan review is for. I see that you have more details in your zoning. But you don't cover all the bases site plan review would. You don't talk about screening in the zoning. And, and a big one that jumped out at me, you don't talk about stormwater anywhere. And that's, that's a really key. That's one of the most important things you want to do with the site plan review is, is look at where the runoff is going and how it's being dealt with. Because even a gravel, the parking area is impervious. So, so my recommendation to you to think about would be under the, while I'm working with you now on other things, let's get the compliance with state law cleaned up. Let's just do that. It won't take that long. But maybe think about, you know, for next year, when you, when you have a new budget, put in a few thousand in to, to work on getting some design construction standards in those regulations themselves. You know, I can show you some examples from other communities that would be compatible, I think, with, with, with your community and with your zoning or adapt some pieces. I mean, there's never a, I never want to see somebody just take something and put it in a town. But, but that's kind of my job is to look at 10 or 12 others and say, well, I like this piece, but I like it better like so. So that, that would be my thought is.
Most towns, let's take an example, parking, all right? They would be in which set, their parking would be in the site plan review regulations? Or would be in their zoning?
Parking requirements take away the ways. So parking and lighting, you see them both ways. You see either the requirements. I'd rather see parking requirements be in the site plan review because you, then you get to have some flexibility.
Yeah, well, the advantage to me, always putting anything in the site plan review regulations is they're a heck of a lot easier to change. You know, because it only takes a vote of the planning board to change them. It doesn't take a town vote.
And, and you don't need to because you have the flexibility. If, if something is, when it's in the zoning, it's so restrictive. All of, anything like landscaping, laying, whatever, is so restrictive. Once it's in the zoning, like you say, it takes a town vote. You as a planning board don't get to look at a site plan and say, well, I see that that's meeting the letter of the zoning, but. well, I see that that's meeting the letter of the zoning, but it doesn't hang together well, and it doesn't hang together well with neighborhood properties. And, and that's gonna be something that you need as you're trying to have more development in the village center and, and have it work together like a whole. Zoning just doesn't give you that flexibility. So there may be some things that, you know, that next year, if you have that, you know, as you project next year, that we wanna talk about taking out of the zoning, but there may be some other things like stormwater that you at least wanna add into the site plan regs so it's somewhere. And screening requirements, I didn't really see that anymore.
Screening, I agree. I thought stormwater, there was a clause somewhere, as I'm going off of memory, that basically says we have a right to demand an engineering study, and that's usually how we handle it, right?
We've been doing it.
We've been doing it, I don't know under what authority, but we've been doing it.
As well as runoff, when we look at a plan.
Part of, part of my job is to point you in a direction that you avoid challenges.
Yeah.
Right, I, I get, I'm including keeping lawyers fees down for you.
Yeah.
What do I look at it?
Well, I don't disagree, 'cause I, I know that we've been referring to the zoning ordinance for all the basic requirements, and when we look at the site plan, that's what we do, is we, the site plan, you're right, the requirements basically say, this is what you have to give us so that we can review it, and then when we review it, we virtually flip back to the zoning ordinance and find out.
And, and that's good, because you have a lot of site design criteria in your zoning, and that's certainly part of the reviewing to be doing, but it's not necessarily all that you can or should be doing.
No, and it might be restrictive if what you're saying is we should have more of these controls in the site regulations.
Yeah, they.
If they may be, you know, you're starting to get more restrictive than what's in the zoning ordinance, and I don't thi, you can't even do that without a, a town vote, and you, you wouldn't be able to be more restrictive, because the developer would just challenge it.
Oh, no, no, that's not the case at all. I mean, the zoning is a minimum, and right now, that's true, because you don't have any language in your site plan.
Yeah, but it's also true, because if the, if the zoning ordinance says you can have, um, you know, ten parking spaces per so many cubic feet, or, or square feet of retail space, you can't change that in the, in the site.
That's not, that's not true. If, if you had.
All right, but you, but you're limited, is what I'm saying. No, you, no, you can't make it more restrictive, because you.
So, so hold up, right now, that's true, but if you had some language in your site plan regulations that said parking must be adequate for the use and vehicular and pedestrian circulation, then you couldn't, but you really feel like it needs twelve parking spaces versus ten, you can do that in site plan review.
But if you, my point is, if you're gonna plan on changing.
But you can't like about eight.
Yeah, if you're planning on changing the site regulations, uh, site plan regulations, you're, you're gonna have to also, at the same time, alter the zoning ordinance to, to give you the flexibility over it, because I, I don't, if I was a developer and someone was saying that the site plan regulations were more restrictive than the zoning ordinance, I'd say, you can't do that, you gotta get the town vote to change it.
I'm not suggesting that you make anything be in conflict, but, but where the details are in the zoning, that you do have some language about the adequacy, um, so that in the instance that, and the zoning is a minimum. And one of the first things I ever did in New Hampshire, and it, it was a little unsettling to be entry level, ran into New Hampshire in nineteen eighty-eight and told I needed to help a town on a cart case, but they're, they turned down, uh, an inn for site plan review because it was too big for the site. It, it technically, you know, they could fit the parking, building, whatever, but they couldn't get really the, enough landscaping and screening to meet the, the kind of qualitative part of the site plan review, and, and that was upheld. That's, you can be stricter. The zoning is a minimum. I don't, I don't wanna see you ever have details in the site plan regulations that conflict with details in the zoning, that, that's not what I'd ever suggest. There may be some details that make sense to take out of the zoning and just have in the site plan.
I guess that's my point, so, so that you're not being more restrictive or.
Yeah, but so that's maybe next year's budget, project.
Well, two, two things, I, I think that in, here in New Hampshire, the, the approach is, in any law, that the town can adopt regulations which are more restrictive than state law, okay? You cannot make it less restrictive. So like Tara said, it is a minimum, so in the hierarchy of our regulations, the same thing applies, so the, the zoning ordinance sets those minimums for you to follow, and then other regulations can be more restrictive.
Sure, I mean subdivision regulations are gonna work the same way, just because somebody can have a house on a lot this size, doesn't mean you're gonna allow every piece of land that size to be subdivisioned for ourselves.
Right.
That's something I didn't realize, I, I thought you couldn't.
Yeah, that's, as long as you're being more restrictive, you're okay. So, but getting, the second thing is, you know, we are at the point, budget wise, where if, if you wanted to do some additional work, you can make an amendment at town meeting to add funds for a specific purpose to the budget, and if we're, you know, if this is something that we, that you guys think is important enough to try to address, I don't know if we're in the process at the point yet where it makes sense to do it, but if, if it's an important enough change to make, if it's gonna add, you know, a couple of thousand, thousands of dollars to the budget, then make the amendment and get the authorization to do it, and, and let's continue to do it. I don't know if that fits, Tara, into what you see as the process.
One thing I threw out, I don't know when you came back in the room, but I was suggesting that because all the deadlines and some other, you know, state statute things are just wrong in the, in the regs, that we just do that, just, you know, it's not gonna take long, but that, um, looking at the substance of the regs would certainly be another project that would need some more funds. It would, I'm not sure the planning board could get through the zoning changes and substantive changes in the site plan regs the same year, but it certainly would be helpful, I think, as we're looking at the zoning, to know that that would be a next step next year, so that we can have that conversation as we're looking at the zoning. And talking about parking and lighting and whatnot, we may, that conversation may be, well, there's something that we might wanna take out of the zoning and put in the site plan regs as part of that next step.
Right, well, my, my only concern is that we not have major gaps in our regulations and be faced with a big development, you know, during the year that we're not ready to handle.
We're, we're kind of building that to-do list as we do the zoning amendments, then we could start on the substantial part of the site plan regs pretty quickly.
Okay.
So, in, I've always relied on, in the site plan review regulations currently, under the purpose, there's a set of general statements that says, the intent of these regulations are protection of public safety, preservation of natural features to the greatest extent possible, and ensuring that the project will have a visual pleasing effect when it's done. And we've used those arguments in the past to say, well, you, you know, that's, you're not adequately protecting the public if you're not providing for snow removal, storage, and all this other stuff, but we've worked on those general statements, you're suggesting that if we really wanna do that, we ought to write more specific regulations around those?
Yeah.
That in mind, perhaps our intent to change the zoning ordinance this year is misdirected and it should go into the regulations. Maybe that effort and time should go into the regulations if that's where, I mean, that's, we've been doing it wrong apparently.
Well, I, you know, the problem is you need both, and, and because in one hand, not every building is subject to site plan review, and we don't wanna make it that way, right? We don't wanna have single-family homes going through site plan review.
Well, it, it never does.
But yet, at the same time, there are certain requirements such as setbacks, parking, and the rest that they have to meet.
Right.
That the building inspector works with, so.
So, so my recommendation would be to just do the really quick and dirty kind of cleanup of the site plan regs, and we, and you have in your plan to look at this kind of tiered process, just, just get that done, think about substantive changes to the site plan regs as we're working on the zoning this year, and then get started on those changes real quickly next year, after the, right after town meeting, that, that's what I think would be a good floorwork. So, um, so I had this waiver section in here under the tiered process for a couple reasons. One is it talks about, um, design and construction standards, but I didn't see any, um, and the other is that that's kind of all you have now in terms of trying to have a tiered process where some things don't have to come, but it's kind of vague, and the goal is, or my goal is always to get things to not be, so that you can stand behind your regulations, stand behind your decisions, feel good, know they'll hold up in court, or, or are unlikely to be challenged, because they're just clear. So, um, so I looked at a bunch of other communities, some that I wrote, some that I have high opinions of the planners, uh, I kind of cobbled this together from some other, um, sources, and I just, you know, today, the goal is not to talk about language or specifics, but just to find out, is this the kind of thing you were thinking about, where, where there'd be, um, so I put together a category that just wouldn't have to come in the site plan at all, and a category that might have some minor process. So if you, we could look and talk about those two groups, and again, not specifics yet, I'll come back to specifics at the next meeting, or send it out between meetings so you'll look at it, um, but is this the kind of thing that is, would solve the concerns that you've had? Start, let's start with exempt, without raising tackles or red flags.
So if it's exempt, then someone who's making a change doesn't, it wouldn't require a public hearing, and the abutters wouldn't have a chance to voice their opinion or anything?
That's what the exempt would be. It would be treated like a single-family home that just doesn't have to commit to the site plan at all.
So what is the review process that determines that it's exempt? The building inspector getting a building permit?
Yeah, do you have any, do you have zoning permits along the way?
Not zoning permits, we just have a building permit process.
I think that's something that we'll wanna look at.
So the, the building inspector looks at a building permit application and says, no, I can't approve this, this needs site plan review.
Yeah.
Because it's a commercial development or whatever.
I think the, um, the way of, the way we've been using it anyway, my understanding of it was that if someone comes in, it's a change of use and it's a development of some sort, but it's not going to be changing the contours of the land, let's say, but it could be changing the looks and so forth, and they don't wanna go through all the engineering process of going out and having the land survey and all that stuff, what we say is, well, that's all right, just bring us enough information so that we know what's going on, so that we can present it to the public, and so that, you know, they can, a decision can be made. If you're not changing the contours, you don't need to go out and get a, a contour survey.
Well, that would be, it sounds to me like what she's put under minor is what you have, is what you have had come in to, to do there.
Right, oh, I'm telling you, start with exempt.
Right.
Do you, in terms of things that just don't need to come at all?
Can I ask a question? Under minor, accessory structures no more than X feet, this for me goes back to the golf course where he wanted to bring in, would he, that would be a minor change to him, and we wouldn't have to post it for the public to come in? Am I understanding this right? I'm just using it as an example, 'cause it's fresh.
Well, you need to decide the X.
You need to decide whether or not it would, that's the question.
You, you need to decide, as you're writing regulations, what the thresholds would be.
Okay.
So that the, so that the building inspector, it's clear to the building inspector, they've applied for a building of X amount of feet, and he says, sorry, you need to go get site plan review, or sees that it's under the threshold and they don't.
So with those changes, we would have put that aside, and our building inspector would have gone out and inspected the site to make sure that he had the distance?
Well, the minor category, what, would, they'd come to you for site plan, in the minor category, they'd come to you for site plan review.
Yeah.
But they don't need to pay a surveyor or engineer, they can just do a sketch and a description.
Like what Terry was just talking about.
Okay.
And it gets in the file, so that it's clear that they had site plan approval, and a, a bank down the road, is there another question whether it had all the permits?
Right.
Someone putting in a frisbee golf course that goes over a whole area, it doesn't make big changes, but affects maybe the abutter. Is that exempt?
That might be minor, but that's the question, what is exempt?
Well, right, the, the key is to write, write the criteria that, and then think about examples like that, and, you know, think about.
Well, exempt minimal impact, you've got minimal impact under that.
Right, but we need to assign criteria to what that means in terms of.
Um, you asked for some feedback as to which of these would be problematic. The incidental insulation such as signs, we require that in, in the zoning, that everybody get a sign permit.
So this, you're not exempting those.
So you can't, you can't get exempted from getting a sign permit, that's all I'm saying.
You're not, this, you're not exempting anybody from zoning in the site plan regulations, you're exempting them from having a public hearing and submitting a site plan.
Right, which, which we don't require, okay, fine. All right, as long as people understood that, I have no prob, you know.
This just helps make it clearer to Chris whether or not to, to make the person fill out a site plan review application or not. You're, you're trying to define, or you are defining for him when he has to, so when I read down through the exempt, some of the things is the way, it basically would make, apply it to the rest of town the way that we are currently dealing with town square, because town square right now is the only commercial area of town where they can make changes without coming to you, and they make changes all the time. They change restaurant to, to retail space, back to restaurant, you guys have not reviewed a single one of those changes.
Why is that?
Well, because they got exempted.
Where does it say that?
I believe it's in the site plan, I think it's, I thought it was in the site plan review.
If it wasn't considered development or.
That it was not considered development.
Well, I'm thinking though, the recent thing we went through.
Yeah, there's that, yeah. Well, there's, there's why some of these things just need to be cleared.
The Board of Selectmen went through with relative to the ice arena, you know, and they added, what they did without changing the footprint to the building, or the volume of, as you said, volume of traffic, they added another allowed use into the building.
Yeah.
And the question becomes, you know, I mean, I, the, they came to the Board of Selectmen and say, well, do we have to go to site plan review, and said, nah, forget it, you don't have to go for the site plan review for that, you know, and we let in at that. But, but you're right, I, I like statement number D, which covers a whole host of things where people, you know, it's one allowed use to another allowed use, you're not changing the footprint. you know, it's one allowed use to another allowed use, you're not changing the footprint of the building. You know, why do you have to go through a review process?
Is this list entire, something that you just compiled, uh, just from scratch or, or the, is this a proven list by some other town? That's worked for years or something?
Indeed.
Well, I'm talking about the whole exempt list.
Um, how occupations are typical that either exempt or have special application process for? Your threshold for whole occupations is so low that it seems like if it meets the zoning, it's not gonna need a site plan review. Um, exempting incidental installations is pretty typical and the minor, minimal impact modifications. D, I, I wrote, I haven't really seen anything exactly like that. I spent some time thinking about what, what would make a change and you just need to come with a site plan review here. And again, these are, um, this is a, this isn't off the top of my head to get feedback on a general idea at this point. This isn't, this isn't.
No, I, well, I personally think this is a good idea to try to get some language around clarity as to what you do, you know, you don't need approval to do, you know? Because right now it's, you could argue everything needs approval.
But the, the list makes sense to me, I just, uh, didn't know if it had been tested at all.
And, you know, there's no two sets the same unless they've copied each other and that isn't always a good thing. Uh, but.
I'm just surprised other towns don't have that one.
We usually see a minor site plan review category. And I, and I read a bunch of those, think about the criteria for that, is usually in large communities that have a planning staff and, um, a committee because you can, if the planning board in a community is so busy with development, they may have a committee that looks at, um, minor site plans instead of them going to the planning board. So that's where you're gonna see minor site plan criteria more. But I thought it made sense to be more like some other towns have for whole occupations where it's just a sketch and a narrative. So it's kind of a calling together of some concepts. And if it makes sense, then I'll, um, take another look at it and, and make it look more like it would need to along with some location requirements that go with the minor. What else can you think of that, um? Talk about some examples like the Frisbee golf course.
Well, I, 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 you know, one of the ones that we should talk about is, is changes to landscaping. I would make that exempt. I mean, if you're going to change your landscaping, do you need to come and get approval?
I, I thought about that.
I mean, no one's gonna come and, no one's gonna actually ever come anyway, you know?
I thought about that, but then the question is, what if you required the landscaping?
Now, we've run into this, yeah? And they don't do it. Or they change it.
But what if they, if they required it and a few years later they wanna take it back out to expand the building? I mean, that kinda maybe should come in for, for at least a minor.
Well. It happens all the time because plants die.
I put that in the minor.
So.
So we, we need to talk more about what that, what changes in landscaping means. So it's obviously not adding or changing a plant, but.
Right.
Well, but what happens is over years, the entire look of something.
One plant at a time.
And they die.
At a time.
Yeah.
And pretty soon, the entire skateboard park is a perfect example.
Yeah.
The skateboard park got approved by the planning board, site plan approval, um, with a certain look to it. And with, but over the years, you know, a, uh, a new row of hedges was put in or a fence was put in somewhere where it wasn't in the approved plan. And then it becomes an enforcement issue and what is, you know, how does that happen in other communities? Because here we kinda say, oh, it doesn't look that bad and let them do it. You know, we, and then before you know it, everyone's going, where did that come from?
It evolved.
It evolves.
And it's tough too when people plant trees that are gonna get too big for the site.
Yeah, they get too big.
Or that don't really deal with our winters or that get in the weeds or.
Right.
So, um, I, I'll think more on that of see what we can do with some thresholds for when is landscaping at least a minor.
Right.
And when is it exempt? Tell me about the Frisbee golf course and what, what made that either need or not need site plan review?
Well, that's the point. That, I think that's what in my mind got me to thinking about, you know, that's when I started looking at the definition because the question came up, he was, the, the individual, the applicant was working on another project that we were reviewing. And he, he said, well, how do I know when I have to come in? Like, what if I do a Frisbee golf course? And so I looked and kinda went through it and I said, do you know something? It could go either way based on this definition, depends on your mood that day.
Yeah.
And so I said, that's not really a good way of doing it.
Right.
And so we didn't, I, I had implied that, yeah, I think you should, you know, make, what I implied was, why don't you come in and do it as a minor? Because it doesn't require all that work, but it gives the public a chance to get their input and so forth. Well, he said, thank you very much, it didn't come in, just put the golf course in, so it's there. But that just emphasizes my point that, you know, you know, what was Chris supposed to do, you know? He didn't.
Well, no, Chris didn't even get anything because most of it was on national forests at the end. And so.
It turns out to be fine and, you know, it turned out to be a kind of a positive and so there's not really that kind of a problem. But the issue is the, the way it happened.
Right.
And, uh, you know, how do you, not that I'm a great control freak, but if you're in a position on the planning board and you wanna be able to make sure things go the right way.
Well, but that goes, I mean, and it goes back to the town square issue. When you have a retail space and they close the retail space and turn it into a restaurant that has tables, sit down meals for fifty people, that does impact the parking. But we've all, you know, how many times have we talked about the fact that we're not using the available parking? So we say, ah, just, you know, it's all interior to the building. The building hasn't been changed at all, they just put in a restaurant instead of a clothing store. And so what has really changed in town square? Well, I don't know. You know, the second floor of town square is nothing like it was when town square was approved. Is that bad? I don't know. So it just keeps evolving and you guys don't participate in that evolution.
So there may be another category for the minor that's some, something about a change of use may need it to come in so that you can verify that parking is all right, um, but not resurvey the, yeah.
Not do a full evaluation, right.
Well, I, the problem, the problem is we, we have no way to verify that the parking is all right. I mean, that's, we know the places where parking is not all right and we know the places where parking is okay because we live here, you know? And, uh, but other than that, I don't know how you, how do we verify the parking's okay? By some formula? The formula is irrelevant.
Well, no, the formula is in your, is in.
I know it's in the zoning, but the formula's not right. So we end up getting into an argument about a formula when the formula doesn't achieve the objective of making sure there's adequate parking because the formula's wrong. For this town, I mean, I don't know why it's wrong, but it's wrong.
Well, that's part of what you're doing this year is reviewing that.
And I would say, based on what I heard today, that that's the zoning ordinance is the wrong place to put the formula. The zoning ordinance should just say, provide adequate parking and the formula should be in the site plan review regulations.
I, I think the, the trickier category that I was a little stuck on thinking all of this is, you know, because of resort community is the outdoor recreation and that's what I was asking about the Frisbee golf course. And we could kinda brainstorm a little bit on what, what would make an outdoor recreation project need to come? What would make it so that you'd want it to come before you?
It's substantial of, of foot traffic. If it was a significant increase in foot traffic, then you'd have to consider all the aspects of public safety, you know, um, as well as parking and those issues. If it was a relatively small increase in traffic, uh, you know, I don't, I don't think anybody's all that concerned.
I think aesthetics, I think how it's going to.
Aesthetics, yeah.
Look. You know, you put the ski jump up there, it's, uh, it's quite visual, so you want that to come in.
That's a little, you can't say aesthetics in the criteria though because then you're asking the building inspector to judge on the aesthetics. So you need, you need things to be more about, um, you know, percentage increase in usage or, um,
to concrete.
Lighting or, you know, real, lack of white tech or, yeah, the size of a structure.
Or a structure.
I think, I think noise level should be in there. Like if they're, um, blowing snow at night next to a house.
It would almost be, almost anything that isn't a butter, you might have a reason to, objective.
I'd be worried about that initially.
That's where I wanna see you add some screening requirements in your occupations that you don't have.
Other than the general statement, which we've used, there's a general statement says it's gotta be adequately screened.
Yeah.
You know, and we've just, well, in our opinion, that's not adequately screened, let's see if we can't work something out together. And they come back with another proposal. Usually on new, there's not much of an issue, you know, because they're trying to get approval. Problem is, is that they don't do it.
Yeah, it never, it never comes out looking on the ground like it does on the plan.
Yeah, right.
But then there's, that's where the, I mean, it's out of our hands adapting to the comments. All we can do is say what we'd like to see. That's interesting.
How do most ha, town, most towns handle that by, if, if someone comes in, gets approval for a plant and what they actually build is, is not what, it's soft areas, things like landscaping, screening, is not what the planning board thought they approved. What's the mechanism that prevents uses today? I mean, the town, does the planning board or the, the building inspector just say, I'm not gonna give you an occupancy permit?
You can.
Is, is that the way most towns handle that?
Rare. It's, enforcement is rare every place. That's, you could do that, but it's, it's not very common.
So how do towns handle it? Well, I, I've gotta believe we're not the only ones that has a problem. We have the guy's landscaping plan is a heck of a lot less lush than it looked on paper. You know, he said, well, the bushes are gonna grow.
Enforcement is a problem every place.
So.
No, you're not the only ones, but enforcement is a problem every place.
Okay, there, there's no easy answer to that.
No.
Okay.
And there's a middle ground too, right? I mean, there's, I mean, obvious, if it's really black and white, obviously you have, are better grounds to not give it an occupancy permit versus a little bit different, right?
Right, yeah, no, we've run into this before where people change the building envelope, you know?
No, I had to go in over, when I was there helping their planning office for a year. I had to go measure to see if one shrub was exactly where it was on the site plan. To me, that was the kind that makes people hate, hate playing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's crazy.
Yeah, well, you try to come to a purpose on this and detail a little bit, but.
Well, when we, I mean, we had, we had a building envelope that was changed and we issued a cease and desist.
Yeah.
Right.
We get the developer to come in and talk to the planning board and get a different plan approved and move forward. So, but it is hard, it's as far as enforcement.
No, and I think as a result of that, we changed our regulations in the sense of saying that if, if we have concerns, we're gonna go hire an engineer who's gonna measure this stuff and you're gonna pay the bill. And, uh, so we've got that in there now at least.
We, is it ever a situation where, um, a person comes in for a building permit or, uh, goes to the town and asks, you know, is the site plan review required for this? That the code enforcement officer would say, I don't know, we'll go to the board and ask. In other words, bring it for the board to see if it is needed.
Yeah, that's done a lot. That's where you'd come in as a conceptual.
So I would say that if Chris has any question or any doubt, that that would be the, the route.
And, but the town, but, but we need to be very clear to developers that, that they're going to have to wait until the planning board makes that determination. Because you, you guys have all seen it, we get the app, the building application, the, the building permit application comes in as the builder is starting the building. You know, if, it's just that the town has been very accommodating in the past. And we've said, oh yeah, don't worry about it, just, you know, go, go fill out the building permit and we'll sign it. I mean, it's just, it's a change of attitude that the, the developers just need to know. You know, don't, you've gotta come in at least seven days prior to the start of the project. There are been, not going to be any exceptions and we're going to go through this process now. And there are towns that do it that way. You can't just do what you feel like doing, which is what people do in this town.
Yeah, which raises a point. I, 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 I hear what you're saying about writing stricter regulations.
Not, not strictly, we are.
But not, well, more definitive regulations in terms of what's allowed and not allowed. But if we have no mechanism whereby we go back and ensure those things were happened, what's, what's the point? It's right now a negotiation process, right? Right? What we have right now is we sit down and we take a look and we go through a checklist and say, I like your landscaping plan or could you, could you change it a little bit? What they end up doing is if we're lucky, is half of what they said they were gonna do anyway. So what's the point of having regulations that say, you know, it needs so many bushes per square foot? I mean, I, I mean, we're not gonna.
Well, but that's just it, if we're not going to hold them to the new regulations, I'm with you though, don't adopt them. But if, if we're going to.
Well, how do we hold them? Of what, there's no way to hold them accountable is what I'm hearing.
We, we, we do, we can, Chris can go out.
And do what?
And not give it an occupancy permit.
He can not give it an occupancy permit or he can, he can do cease and desist orders. However, that hasn't been what the town has wanted to do. The town has wanted to be accommodating.
Right.
And so if you, if the planning board and the board of selectmen say, these are our regulations and we are going to live by them, then we will live by them. However, that hasn't been our approach.
Okay.
And, and I don't, you know, this is a lot of effort if we're not going, if we're gonna keep our same attitude of, eh, don't worry about it, it's not hurting anything.
Well, it's, it, it comes down to usually the change, in many cases, the change is, you'll look at it, say, well, that's no worse than what we had proposed and, you know?
Right.
It's okay.
Right, and that, yeah. And, and so, I mean, we can continue on that way, but it, it's going to become more and more difficult because we have less and less land and we have, there's more of an impact, there are more neighbors to have an impact on now than we've had in the past. So, you know, I'm, I'm all for having clearer regulations that are easier to follow, but we have to follow them.
And, and I'm not suggesting that you make things stricter, I'm, what I'm trying to do is help you put words to what you're doing already.
Right.
So that it's clear to the, to the builder, clear to the town staff, clear to everybody what needs to come before you and what doesn't.
Well, and also what needs to be enforced. That's, that's the thing, that we're going to, to have the attitude that we're going to enforce whatever we agree to.
Well, certainly, pretty easy, I think, for somebody to get away with not coming to you now, the way things are.
Absolutely.
I mean, I'm just, I'm just gonna read this and decide that when I changed the retail store into a restaurant with a Frisbee Golf Course, none of that was construction of improvement, and I'm not gonna come in right now. But once you have the list of what's exempt, well, gee, those things weren't on the exempt list, I better at least see if I need to come for a minor. Last excuse for not, not following. So if that sounds like a reasonable approach, I'll, um, put some language to it and work on just some of the quick and dirty cleanup of some of the deadlines and stuff. I'll do that over the next couple months, maybe not for the March meeting, but for the April meeting at least.
And, um, in the meantime, Mark, you're gonna look back at the town vote for the planning authority on our site plan.
Yeah, I did.
Wait to find out.
It, it is development, it, it only says.
New development?
It says, um, for the development of tracks for non-residential uses or for multi-family dwelling units other than one and two family dwellings. Whether or not such development includes a subdivision or a re-subdivision of the site. That, it does not say anything about, um.
Okay, so, so there's two, two approaches.
Construction.
One would be, um, in this next set of zoning ordinance that you're gonna be working on, put one in that gets in the zoning, the statement that site plan reviews are required for development, change of use or expansion of use. Or that the, it would say that the planning board is authorized to develop regulations for those things. Then you get, you know, your tier. The second approach, and I don't, I wouldn't recommend this without running by the town attorney. I saw in one of the sets of regulations I was reading, that this must happen in another community. So they put a definition in the site plan regulations that said, development means new construction, change of use or expansion of an existing use. That was a little bit.
But it, it does.
Or on the corner a little bit.
The definition does say, construction of improvements.
Yeah.
So which would be any construction, unless you're making something worse.
But it's not, it's not really the whole picture, that, I think you need to get those other words somewhere. Whether you redefine development in the site plan regulations or clarify it in, in the zoning.
It's so much clearer just how it's spelled out in the regulations, instead of having to turn back to the definition, why make it more complicated?
Yeah, but you're gonna have to change it in the zoning, is what I'm saying, right?
Preferred.
Yeah, that'd be the preferred, that'd be the preferred, that's it, yeah.
That's what, that's what you're leading.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, in town vote, I know, you can't just, to me, I don't know, I think the authority's there, but it's all right.
Well, but that's what we're gonna lean on in two thousand eighteen, is that we feel that the authority is implied. However, we're gonna correct it in two thousand nineteen to make it clearer and spell it out. And that, that's a good argument for making the change in the zoning ordinance in two thousand nineteen. This is something that we're doing anyway, we wanna make it clearer, and that's.
And then get rid of the, we'll get rid of the definition of development in the site plan, right?
Right.
We're gonna have a clear list of what needs to come in and what doesn't.
Okay.
But we're gonna kinda think about the timing of, like.
Making that change.
Yeah.
Yeah, that maybe should come in the year two changes, after the zoning.
It, it could come in at the end of this year, once they approve the zoning change.
Yep.
Then we could make it in, say, November or December of this year. Because those regs will have, will have force and effect once they move them forward to town meeting. Right, once we're inside the window.
Yeah.
It's funny, if, if we're gonna do something in the zoning regulations though, um, that does state what development is, you ought to have a definition of it. 'Cause I don't think there is one in there now. There's one in the subdivision, but not in the.
Well, but if we use the language that's in six seventy-four forty-three, it says, development or change or expansion of use.
Alright, should you, I think you should define, define those though, yeah.
So. You wanna define those too?
I wanna define those in the zoning ordinance, yeah.
Well, they're gonna be defined by your list of exempt.
Yeah.
That's how you're gonna define it, you're gonna say.
Yeah, but now, you, you're authorizing it in the zoning ordinance, but you're not defining it until you get into the site plan, which is what you didn't wanna do. And you, how, how can you go to the site plan and define?
Because the, the zoning is gonna authorize the planning board to have regulations using the state statute enabling language. And then you're gonna decide with your regulations, if it's a bike rack, it's not development. If it's a home occupation, it's not development. Soon as you put in a definition, now you might be in conflict with your list of exempt things. You just go one way or the other.
Government. Nothing's clear.
Well, I mostly make it clear and simple. I like clear and simple.
I'm telling you. Yeah. Okay.
Speaking of clear and simple, one of the things that.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna be on the road at nine thirty.
Okay, one of the things that has always confused me here is who has the authority to say, that's not an allowed use? Is that the planning board, or is that the board of selectmen, or both?
It's the board of selectmen would be appealed to the zoning board.
Somehow we need to write that into the regulations, that you can find no definition of who gets to say that. And it's, every time it comes up, it's confusing to me.
It's not in the zoning ordinance?
I can't find it anywhere, it's in the zoning.
I missed that when I did your cleanup two years ago.
Well, I, I, if it is, it's not real clear.
Alright.
It, it basically does, it does say that, that we have the, that the board of selectmen have the, you know, have the right to say something is not an allowed use, you know? But it doesn't say that the planning board, what's the planning board's role in it or in it?
Not, planning board writes the zoning, planning board doesn't interpret it.
Right, so somebody walks in with an application, alright? You know, in site plan review, this is where it comes up, I wanna build a wedding pavilion, alright? And someone, and the first thing you look at is, is that allowed? Is that an allowed use? So that person should, who wants to do that, should first go to the board of selectmen to get approval? That it's allowed, or the planning board can say, I, it's not allowed, it's not written down anywhere, it's an allowed use?
You, you can do that if that's what you think, and then, and then they appeal it to the zoning.
Who, what, who we can do?
If you deny a site plan based on the zoning.
Right.
They appeal that to the zoning board, not to the court.
So the town, so the planning board can deny an application based on the fact that it's not an approved, it's not on the approved allowed use.
If, if you're talking about a site plan application, yeah.
Site plan, right, because that's the mechanism typically we hear about them.
Yeah. Right.
If somebody comes in and, and wants to go through site plan review.
Yeah, if you deny a site plan because it doesn't comply with the zoning in any way, the setback or whatever, the person can appeal that to the zoning board.
They don't, they wouldn't go to the selectmen first?
No.
The planning board being an arm of the selectmen, you know, the, the lower tier of it, if they rejected it, then the developer would lose.
Well, you're not a lower tier of the select board, you're an entirely different body with entirely different authority.
Right, but I'm just, for people that are coming in, you know, 'cause we, we do get into these, you know, the Frisbee Golf is a perfect example. Is that an allowed use?
You, you, you recommend the zoning, you write it, recommend it, the select board enforces it, the zoning board interprets it, you might say. And that's, that's what an appeal is, they're looking at it and interpreting it.
So the role of the planning board is simply to say, in our, by vote, we say this does or does not comply with the zoning as now written. And the first review ought to be, does it exactly meet all of the strict zoning requirements? 'Cause if it doesn't, the application should be rejected on the basis of it does comply with the zoning.
But the way you asked it the first time is true too, somebody comes in for conceptual.
Right.
And you say, gee, we're not really sure that's gonna get a zoning permit, we're not really sure that.
Well, we don't have a zoning permit, right, but.
We, we're, we're not, we're not sure it's gonna get a permit.
Right.
Why don't you go talk to the, whoever issues the permits?
We don't have zoning permits.
No, no, the building, so.
We have building permits.
You're, you're a code enforcement person.
We have code enforcement.
So, in our case, if they came in for a conceptual, you'd send them to the court enforcement office or just to, that would be the friendly way, is this gonna get a permit?
Right, but the, the dilemma becomes recently.
But if, but if the application's already in front of you, then you have to deny it, you don't think.
We recently had cases where there isn't much building. It, you know, it's basically just the, using the land in a way that's not allowed in that particular zone. But it doesn't involve construction of a building.
That's the point, we need to get clearer in the site plan, right, your authority, that's, yeah.
Okay.
That, that doesn't get cleared up, because they wouldn't even come into Chris for a building permit.
Right, and. No, right.
That's the.
If they're just doing.
That's the value of having a zoning permit.
So we need to clear that up.
If you're thinking of doing something, the first thing you need to do is, possibly, is to get a zoning permit. Something that says it's allowed in the zoning, the way you're, you know, you're thinking about it.
Well, they can't get the permit until you've given them site plan review, but they could go ask the person that issues the permits, is this gonna be okay?
Right. Alright. Okay.
Alright, thank you Tara.
Thank you.
Nice to be off course. Nice to be off course.
That just got more.
Yes, absolutely. So we are gonna go with Marjorie, right?
There's a lot of embodying that.
Yeah. Well, no, um, you're gonna hold the.
This is really isn't that clear, we just make this clear.
Yeah.
Whether it's Marjorie or.
Yeah.
But the whole idea that.
I think we were, yeah, I think we were going to say it's set in Marjorie base.
It's planning meeting.
That's just how, we're all screwed up.
We're gonna say it's set in Marjorie, but we find out we're missing a lot of people.
Someone will let me know.
Someone will.
I'll keep you updated when I get things back from them.
But that would solve a lot of problems, we just need regulations afterwards, we're going from the town.
Thank you.
Yeah. A little bit to make it better. Thank you Tara. Okay, go to the next, new business, Mark, you had said something about the March meeting, but I think we're all set on that. Yeah, and just to kind of, um, fill you in, 'cause you were gone, Carrie's going to be, um, a couple, a couple weeks before each meeting, sending out a copy, a PDF file of the intended schedule that Tara presented, and try to hear some sort of a feedback as to how many people are going to attend, so that if there's not anybody, anybody there, we shouldn't have to make the trip.
Should we decide how many people do we need there before we move?
I think you're alright with a quorum, I think if you have four, you're doing alright. It's gonna be hard to, if you try to keep.
So four committed people.
They'll be very, you know, they'll vary going through.
I think it's really important that we, during town meetings, school district meeting, anytime that you're talking to anybody new in town, that you mention that there are four vacancies here. Two on the conservation commission and three on the CBA. So, what's that, seventy-nine, there are nine positions open currently on town boards. So, any help would be appreciated.
Okay, um, any other new business?
Um, I, I just wanna make sure, are people aware of the fact that there is a, a zoning? Not a zoning, there is a warrant article that's going to change, it's attempts to change the tax incentives on new development on, uh, on land in the valley? Okay, there is a warrant article and it basically, the only thing it does not cover is residential land. But if you wanna, um, the way this works, it's a state program and you, you have to adopt it as a town. If you, if you do something that causes an increase in your assessment, for instance, the sports center last year built that water park, that could lead to an increase in their assessment. They're entitled to a fifty percent break on the taxes for ten years on whatever the increase in value is. Um, and they get a fifty percent break on the town's portion of the tax bill, which is basically the town and the education, alright? It does not entitle them a break on either the state educational tax or on the county tax. Um, but if it's approved, if somebody built a million and a half dollar hotel, or let's say they built a five million dollar hotel, for ten years, they would get a break on the taxes, a little bit, a little bit of a break on the taxes, not a whole bunch. So, that is on, it is a warrant in this year's, uh, town meeting.
You had talked about it briefly.
Yeah.
At the last meeting, you had mentioned it about.
Right, okay, well, the, the board of selectmen have moved it forward to a warrant. Town will vote on it. And, and it sounds like you, you know, we're giving away a lot of money, nah.
A portion is getting sold.
The amount, the amount of value of the tax exemption, even, you know, unless you, unless you invested twenty million dollars. But it does, for instance, cover, um, even the ski mountain. I mean, if they made a major improvement, uh, they would for a ten-year period get some break on their taxes.
Okay. Any other new business? Okay, I don't have anything under old business, has anybody got anything under old business?
Yeah, the, um, we briefed also a warrant article for the entrance to the town. And I really, there will be a presentation, um, at town meeting, but I think it's gonna be very important that there be a lot, if you guys wanna support it, that there be comments in support of it, or, because this is a written ballot vote and it needs two-thirds approval to cats, so that is a high threshold. And you know as well as I do that if it's written ballot, that people are more apt to put no down.
Yep.
So.
What's the, what's the amount?
Two hundred and fifty thousand for the entrance. And that includes the sign, the sidewalk on the left-hand side.
On both sides.
And if we have enough money, if the two fifty is enough, we'll repair and replace the right side also. But again, people had questions last night about, why are we doing this kind of a thing, right, Nancy, I, I just. Overall, they were okay with. Overall, they were okay with it, but there wasn't, I don't think, resounding support, so...
Silence does not mean approval.
That's right.
I learned that.
Yeah, so, if you guys want it, then we need to, we need to say something.
Yeah, I think visuals are too much sword, they get people down their path of excitement, but also, I'm talking about design, unfortunately.
Yeah.
But it's hard to, for people to envision without any visuals, I think.
Well, we'll just use the same visuals that we used the last two years with examples of what it would look like, because you don't have a design yet.
Yeah.
And you don't have the money to get a design before town meeting, until the passes.
Yeah.
So... That's, you know... Otherwise, we're just gonna be dead in the water again, in the desert, and studying recommendations, so...
Okay.
Chicken or an egg.
Okay, any other old business? Committee reports, that probably was sort of committee report-ish.
Yeah, that was.
Yeah. Communications, Carrie, you got any communications that we would like to have?
I do, just, um, and I'm gonna send this to all of you, just about the, uh, spring planning and zoning conference is gonna be coming up. So if anyone wishes to be able to go, um, registration's gonna start in February. But I'll send it all out to you, just so you have it in the email with everything else.
Okay. Uh, I guess with no other business, anybody else got anything on the tripwire floor or anything, we'll, uh, entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, closed. Thank you for making it in with this...